This conference will now be recorded.
No, they didn't.
They only got 20 minutes.
I think it was 26 to final scores, 26 to 23, I think.
Thanks for having us. I am Zach Dinsmore with Computer Technology Solutions out of Mankato. So a couple of years ago, early 2020, we started some major network overhaul and cleanup and everything like that to kind of address the technical sprawl that had occurred over the years, which is a pretty common occurrence, right? You start adding to things over time and pretty soon you've got a big mess, right? And so we got all of that cleaned up, overhauled all of the cabling and the network equipment, servers, firewalls, computers, a pretty major project. And the next piece of that that we recommended was to have an independent third-party information security audit done. So since we are managing IT for the city of New Prague, it's our opinion that for us to perform that security audit is a clear conflict of interest. We stand to gain from the results of that. And so we recommended that the city find a third party and they decided to move forward with True North Consulting, which was the same firm that did the original technology refresh, RFP. So as expected, the score came back lower than everyone would have hoped. That's mostly due to lack of information security policy, right? Much of that is HR control and a lot of that is currently being worked on with the city. So the True North information security audit is based on the NIST cybersecurity framework, which are basically the guidelines handed down by the federal government for how to properly protect data, right? And it says not just what to do, but to do it in accordance with written policy and procedure, right? And that's most of what's missing at this point, as far as that's concerned. So the city scored a cumulative average of 1.2 and the target is three, okay? The peer average was 1.3. So you scored pretty much right on track with other similar organizations, right? Which is kind of what we expected, right? A lot of the right controls in place, but a lot of missing policy, right? So that's where we're at. True North, as well as CTS, provided a lot of policy templates and guidance to the city, but much of that will have to be worked on over a period of even years, right? We cannot ultimately dictate the policy of the city, right? But we can enforce a lot of it through technical controls, if that makes sense. And so I like to use the USB drive analogy, right? Are your users allowed to use USB drives to transport data, right? If so, what data is allowed to be transferred over a USB drive? Does the city have to provide those USB drives or can people bring their own? And do those USB drives need to be encrypted? If so, do they need to be encrypted for all data or only certain types of data? Those are the types of things that we need to work through, right? And then we can determine how we can actually enforce those things on the technical level, right? So that's kind of where we're at, is building out all of the policy and procedure around that so that we can start enforcing those things. So CTS provides all of the kind of basic checkboxes of security for a layered approach to security with firewalls and antivirus and keeping everything up to date and email security and those kinds of things. But it's kind of time to go to the next level, if that makes sense. So that's where we're at on the policy and procedure side. Dan, do you have anything to add on that?
No, not on that.
Okay. So the next piece of the audit was physical security. So this gets into all of the various locations. And that's City Hall and pump stations and the power plant and the filter plants and everything else, right? So they evaluated a total of 16 properties and found that many of them are not protected by camera system, by surveillance. And many of them do not have an access control system that would audit user access, right? So some of them do have a keypad system, but that keypad is shared between people and there's no way to actually audit that access. So in addition to that, in some places, the network equipment is in rooms that are unlocked. But that gets into whether or not the city is okay with people that already have access to that facility, having access to that network equipment, right? You get into the conversation about an inside threat actor, right? Got a utility employee that decides they're going to cause damage to something. And is that a risk that's worth mitigating, right? So that's really the physical piece. With the Line Garage Edition, there are the first stages of citywide camera system and access control being rolled out. But that's a long way from having all locations protected. So that's where we're at on the physical security. So then we get into the actual vulnerability scanning. These are scans that are run both outside of the network trying to come in and within the network to see essentially what they can compromise, right? What vulnerabilities they can exploit. And there were a few things found on the external. There was a medium vulnerability found, which we tracked down to being the firewall's web interface itself. So basically the login portal for the firewall, which was open to their scanning tool, but is not actually open to anything else. So it's really not a vulnerability, right? There is no update or anything that can correct this. This was just that their scanner had access to the firewall, if that makes sense. So we are pursuing that to see if we can convince the firewall vendor to release an update to mitigate it, though again, it's not actually a risk in this case. So the internal vulnerability scan found a variety of things. There was a vulnerability found on the Golf Now server, which is what runs the golf course. Essentially, all the scheduling and everything like that at the golf course runs through this. There was a vulnerability found on that. We are pursuing that with the software vendor. That's a piece of software that runs everything and ultimately it's up to the vendor whether or not they have a new version available that can mitigate that. And then the other one that was associated with that was the old Yukon servers, which are actually actively being eliminated. So a migration is currently in progress to go to the new version of Yukon. So that risk has already been mitigated. So there's another one with Golf Now. And then there was a recent vulnerability found that affects network equipment from basically every manufacturer on the planet, as well as a variety of other services. There are updates available for those at this point. And so we are working on rolling out updates. Though to clarify, the switches are, the network equipment is basically on an isolated portion of the network that cannot be accessed unless you have significant inside knowledge and access into the facilities themselves to be able to exploit any of those vulnerabilities, right? So it's a very, very low risk, but there is a risk there. So we are going to update those, right? So let's see, anything else here that we needed to, Sean? Very similar with, there's the, on the very back of your packet, there's the, at the bottom of Critical, there's VMware and ESXI. That's again, a fairly recent vulnerability that was identified and that needs to be updated. Again, we are scheduling that with the city. So the rest of these are high, which are actually, most of which are mitigated by the other updates. So these affect some of the same systems, right? And are related to the same critical vulnerability. So most of the same actions do remediate those issues. The one I did want to call out is that there is specifically something for EnerGov. That is, EnerGov's on a pretty old version, right? And there is a vulnerability on a service that runs as a part of the EnerGov software. And I'm not sure that there's anything that we can do to mitigate that.
We're updating to the newest version at end of September, I think the last week of September now.
Perfect.
We've been waiting for that.
Yeah. Okay. So then that addresses that one. So that's sort of the summary of what was found. And we're happy to answer questions about that or what other actions are being taken if you're interested. Again, the big thing here is all the policy and procedure, right? And that's sort of the elephant in the room with all of it, so.
So on all of the software that is listed here, how often is it monitored for either new versions or patches or whatever the case may be so that it's always running at the highest version or?
So it's a constant game of whack-a-mole, right? For every time there's new updates released, there's new vulnerabilities found, right? So we have an annual maintenance plan that addresses all of this as far as all the network equipment and everything is concerned. So that's addressed at least annually. Though if there's a critical vulnerability that we're notified of, we will address those immediately, right? If they're found. So if we're notified by a vendor that there was a vulnerability found in one of their products, for example, we will go on a campaign to address that everywhere that it's present, right? On the software, we run automated updates for a lot of these things. But some of them are outside of our control. So with how Golf Now, for example, designs their application is not within our power. And so if they leave a vulnerability in place, we can ask them if there's anything they can do about that. But they may simply answer that there isn't an answer there. So yeah, we're actively managing the risks within our control.
Okay, okay, that's good to know because I wasn't sure if it was, how frequent it was. And I certainly understand that a vendor, if they're being a good citizen, will let you know if there's a vulnerability.
However, we do recommend conducting a vulnerability scan on an annual basis to look for these things that are other tools or notifications may not be able to notify us of, right? So again, you know, using Golf Now as an example, right? We should know that there's a vulnerability there and at least try to pursue that with the vendor. So an annual vulnerability scan is still advisable. And we've identified that need and that we feel that that applies to all of our customers. And so we're adding that into our annual maintenance plan anyway, to make sure that that's.
And it should be part of our policy besides to do, otherwise known as a penetration test.
How about this outside firm? How often would you recommend that we bring them in to just double check and alleviate the?
So, you know, the government recommends conducting a risk assessment on a periodic basis, but does not necessarily say how often that should be. Many organizations that have a low tolerance for risk are doing it even on an annual basis. But there's a significant cost associated with that, right? There are other means of doing some risk management in between and using a third party as sort of a check on us, right? Which is why we recommended it in the first place. And so you can do some of that too at a much lower cost. So for example, we can provide vulnerability scanning in between, say every six months or every year, right? But it wouldn't be the full in-depth assessment where they're going around and taking pictures at every site and digging into all of your internal policy.
And going back to the previous audit and saying, oh, they did this and they did this.
And one of the most important things with cybersecurity is to show continuous improvement, right? So it's a constantly moving target. There are always new technologies, there are always new threats, right? And so it's getting to perfect is an unattainable goal. It's about showing that you're doing your due diligence and continuously improving on that, right? And so I would recommend conducting that third-party assessment every two or three years and running more of an internal vulnerability scan every year at least.
And then just to follow up with the Golf Now, for example, with the golf course, it's one thing to screw up a bunch of tee times. But I would take it that if it was more serious as far as the accounting part of it or something, you would, and that vendor was not updating up to a secure level, you would approach us or city staff and say, we recommend that you drop the contract with Golf Now, for example, because of this? Is that something that you would?
That's exactly why a vulnerability scan like this is so valuable is because otherwise we may not have insight into that. And so we can go and approach Golf Now at this point and we can ask them if they have a means of remediating this or mitigating this risk. And if not, why not or when will you, right? And then we can bring that information back to the city so that you can make a decision. Now, we take a lot of other steps to maintain security. So for example, the golf course is segmented off from the rest of the city. So something being compromised at the golf course can't breach any other systems, right? Things like that. But that's not to say that there's no risk associated with something happening there.
Is there accounting or point of sale on that?
Well, that's what I was kind of getting at. So or even people that make tee times and then pay online or you know, reserve their tee time with their credit card information? So that's just, I just want to know that if you get a, you know, no response from these guys, you'll come back to us and say, hey, this is our recommendation. We get rid of these guys because they're telling us to go pound sand, you know?
I really don't want to just throw Golf Now under the bus.
No, I didn't think that either. That was just an example.
There are many cases where something will show up with a vulnerability because the vulnerability is possible, not because it actually exists, right? It's, we noticed that this version of this is running, which could be vulnerable in this use case, right? And so we may very well call Golf Now and they could tell us, well, that doesn't apply because we don't run that service, right? So we run these other three components of that application, but not the one that's actually vulnerable. And so it doesn't apply, right? And so that's, so I just wanted to be clear that I'm not saying Golf Now is not.
No, no.
But it did show up on the reports.
Right, no, I get that.
Well, and we would just bring back anything where there is no update available or where the vendor's not being cooperative or whatever. You know, I don't know if it's really our place to tell you, you know, what vendors.
No, but it'd be nice for the golf board to know, you know?
And let you guys decide whether you want to, you know, continue with that relationship or not.
So definitely one other thing I took from our meeting with them. With all these risks, there's going to be some risks that we may judge that the cost is too high to be. It might be, well, we could lock down our server rooms like Fort Knox. You got to have 28 passcodes to get in. But is the cost of doing that worth actually locking them down and that sort of thing too? So part of the assessment is determining what risk we might actually just be willing to live with.
Yeah, it's okay to accept a risk. I mean, you can basically accept a risk, mitigate a risk or eliminate a risk. And the big thing about that is to document what the risk is, what action you took and why, right? So if we investigated this and we found that it would cost $80,000 to sufficiently mitigate this risk and it was determined not to be worth it, then that's fine as long as it's documented as such, so.
Question. After you mitigate some of these risks, if we took this assessment next year, we'd score a lot higher?
The biggest thing that's going to make a difference here is the policy and procedure. If we run the firmware updates now and then ran the scan again, it would absolutely improve your score, your total score. That's not to say that between now and then, new vulnerabilities could be identified, right? So it's a constantly moving target.
That's the goal though, is to continue to improve.
Piggyback on Sean's comment about now, are there other areas of the city's operation where we're dealing with non-public information that we have a serious threat or vulnerability right now?
There were no major threats identified as far as that would actually be critical to loss of data or anything like that. Most of what we found was potential for denial-of-service attack type of thing. But again, that's where if somebody could potentially take a service down and make it inaccessible, not actually steal data. And even to accomplish that, they would have already had to get inside of your facilities and gain access to your network to do that, right? So we didn't find anything critical. Yukon was old, that was one that showed up a few times on here. But that has already been migrated or will be migrated any day at this point. The new system has already been deployed. So we didn't see anything critical as far as that's concerned. But you know, the policy and procedure is just huge, right? If an incident does occur, what steps are you going to take? When do you notify the public? At what time is it applicable to notify the public? Do you involve your insurance company, you know, city attorney, all of those kinds of things? Those incident response plans? And then, say you have a fire at City Hall, right? How will you keep the city operating in the meantime, right? Where do we take all of that equipment? Where do we restore your data? What are the most important services to get back up and running first, right? All of those kinds of things are going to make the biggest difference in your score.
We have a procedure that we're asking third-party vendors like the golf course or utilities for credit cards and things like that, that they are performing their own risk assessment and giving us copies of it to show that it were documented and doing business with their security threats being looked at.
That's a great question. And that's actually part of the guidance in the NIST cybersecurity framework that would come out in those policies is vendor risk analysis, right?
Because you know, I think of like utilities with the credit cards, but I also think of the utilities with their agency, their power agency. You know, if that system gets hacked, it could trip down the line. And I'm thinking like electrical outages. And you know, how secure are they?
Well, and facilities are really important with all of that too. Somebody gains physical access to the power plant, for example, that can be a big deal, right? So.
Or the wastewater treatment plant.
Access to our physical internet or, I'm just, I'm thinking of the baseball field as an example. That I guess I was surprised that we have internet capability here. But that would seem to be a very vulnerable physical location. And I'm not advocating that we have cameras everywhere and certainly not there either. But we used to look at either accepting that business risk or looking at that. Because that would seem to be, there are other ones. But that one just stuck out, sticks out to me that in those sorts of locations.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a fair point. And there are ways to further separate that from the network if that's what was determined necessary, right? So the ball field has private fiber run to it, like most of your locations do. There's fiber optic cable running everywhere. And so that is effectively an extension of the city right now. If that's not necessary and if people don't need that access, we can certainly change it. Or we could even do something like bring in a separate internet connection and completely run that as an island all by itself.
So the city's fiber does not go to the baseball? It's the private that comes or that goes in?
When I say private, I mean fiber that you own.
It is the city's connection, physical connection that we're connected to as all other city buildings is our fiber, I understand.
Yeah, there's.
That is a separate network though.
Yeah.
It would be a separate guest network. So on your wireless, also you're on your wireless access points for your wireless network, you can have multiple networks on there. So different groups of people connect to different networks. The city employees that connect to one network. You can have a guest, you know, sitting at the ball field that can get internet access through the city's internet, if that's the way you want it, and have it still be secure because it's isolated through a separate.
Now that you just said that out loud, we don't have any situations where we have a guest or public on our internet access though, do we?
We do, like even here, we have a city guest.
So keep in mind, when we say internet, you're sharing a connection to the outside world.
Same.
So like when you connect a laptop to the city network, you select a network. So on your laptop, there's multiple networks. And one of those is for guests. And then one of those is for, you know, I don't know how many you have. I don't remember what they're called here. But you'll have, you know, at least two, maybe more for different purposes. And those are logically isolated from each other. They still go out your internet connection, but nothing can, nothing can come from that guest and talk to your wastewater treatment or your power plant or your.
Well, that's interesting. Same as my system at home, I imagine, when you have a modem and you have three different, you have a guest there and you have a 2.5 and you have a 5. And so you have three different connections, but it's still one modem.
Yeah, so.
Operating with, which is still.
With enterprise network equipment, what you can do is you can carve up those networks. Well, it's on the network switches and on the access points and on the firewall and everything like that. So that they are so separated, it's the same as if they were on separate pieces of equipment, right? So they're still leaving the building on the same fiber line because that's the internet feed into the city. But behind them, they're completely unaware of each other. It's as if the other doesn't exist, right? The difference is that rather than installing separate pieces of physical equipment, which gets very expensive, you carve those resources up for their different intended uses, right? And that's a very common security practice to do that. So even between internal city staff, right? Don't need access to public utilities, right? And so the network is divided up based on the principle of least privilege, right? So people that don't need access to the police department don't have access to the police department. People that don't need access to public utilities don't have access to that. And guest has access to nothing. They get a restricted internet connection and that's all they get, right?
Came from a banking background where it's very, this is very detailed, very specific. Both banks, different situations, but neither would allow what you're talking about. They would require separate networks completely.
Yeah, they've come around on some of that stuff. But I know bank auditors especially want to see a network map that shows physically separated pieces of equipment. But that doesn't actually improve security in any way. That was really just for a visual representation, well, this is this and that's that, right? It's very clear because they're running through separate physical cables and separate devices. But behind the scenes, what we're doing is not any different. It's completely separated in the same manner, so.
Could be some crazy regulation, banking regulation, right?
Things, take things very seriously.
They like that for understanding. They like to be able to see, this goes out here and this goes out there. So what we're talking about is essentially, it's sometimes called a software overlay. Have you ever heard the term? Basically, what's going on is we're taking your physical network and we're chunking it up into a whole bunch of separate individual networks. And then we're giving different access to different groups. And then none of those can talk to each other, but they can all talk out to the internet. That's basically what's going on.
As I look at our enterprise, I would think that the data breaches and that kind of information stuff isn't as much of a risk as the operational risk of being able to run our utilities or running our business. That seems to be a higher risk for us categorized. Although data breaches or anything like that or information they get outside would be pretty embarrassing.
Yeah, can be very destructive to reputation, so. Yours and ours.
So many details, and I think you're covering in this summary, very much a summary, not a lot of detail in this. But there's so many details that have to be followed up. To me, I would request that staff, management, CTS, whoever, provide some kind of Excel spreadsheet that lists all these vulnerabilities, timeframe we're dealing with. When are these updates going to occur and check them off, have they occurred? Because one of the things I'm familiar with is it's such an avalanche of information and stuff to do that, as you said, it takes a long time. And if someone's not monitoring, if we're not able to see a document that says, okay, this is where we're at today. You know, three months from now, we won't remember what we talked about today. But to me, I would feel comfortable if we had a document that's more detailed.
Well, and True North did provide all of that. All those documents exist. We just didn't want to bring too much of a wall of information at the meeting.
I had, I understand that part of it. I'm talking about what I would refer to as management's response to saying, what are we going to do about it? What's the timeframe we're going to get it done? They're, I understand their report. But looking at their report, this is our map of what we're going to do and where we're going to do it. And if CTS, you're guys are going to do it or we're going to do it, who's responsible to make sure that update occurred in September?
I think that could be a simple project plan.
Yeah, and we have service tickets open currently for all the critical and high vulnerabilities. And so those are already active in our system and.
We see, to me, if we had a detailed line, that's what I'm used to seeing. This is what it is. And okay, this is the remarks is that you have a service ticket and it's going to handle and this is the days it can be done. And we can look at that report later on and say, okay, this is where we're at. These things aren't done, they're critical or they're not critical.
Okay.
Yeah, that spreadsheet already exists. Again, that came out of the True North assessment. They gave us the spreadsheet. So I basically took.
But the timeline is not associated with it.
Yeah, correct. We could add columns, yeah, we could add columns, we can assign people. We can, like Zach said, you know, we've already got service tickets out for a bunch of this stuff. So we're already moving on that front, so.
Well, and really what you're talking about there is more of ongoing risk management, which I also think is a good idea. So that's where you're setting those deadlines and then you're continuously tracking that over time. And as you complete a policy, you can upload that policy as a supporting document and things of that nature. That really gets into the whole risk management piece, which was another conversation we've been having with the. Uh, that really gets into the, the whole risk management piece, um, which is another conversation we've been having with the.
Some of those procedural things, they may be recommended are long-term discussion items that you are gonna say, well, it's there, but. I'm gonna look at it next year. I'm not gonna do it immediately, but.
Well, physical security is a great example. There could be a huge price tag associated with that that you're not prepared for, so.
If you, if you go through this and, you know, looking at it and you're like, well, you know, we trust everybody in this facility. So we have a, a, you know, a rack of equipment in this facility that doesn't have, you know, doors or a lock on it or the, or the. Lock on it isn't locked. You may or may not care depending how much, on how much you trust the people that have access to that room or to that building. You know, and so it's just like anything, it's a trade-off. You know, there's a cost with mitigating that risk. If the cost is too high, you may choose to just accept the risk and trust the people.
And you mentioned that and I, I'm not, I'm just using the baseball. Example, I, I'm not trying to highlight that in any way, but. Are there, there's no servers or anything in that. It's just that we have a connection that someone could connect to it. And it's open to the public or public is in there. I can't think of too many other public locations that the cities must. Is that a new break connection?
And that's ju- and that's based on um, recording um, um, hockey games and the camera system. That's not city, it's school, but it's public.
Well, I think the added dimension of having non-employees in there, I think is a, a good. Segmenting of it. And if we look at what other areas do we allow public into an area where connections are accessible?
Yeah, so the golf course is another big one where there's uh, there's public wifi that's commonly used. Uh, but there is guest wireless in pretty much all the locations, so. And, and that, that's intended for you bring vendors in and have meetings and things like that. That's very commonly needed. E- even the wastewater treatment plant, for example, there's no cell service anywhere in that building, right? And so if you've got a vendor and they're working on something and they need internet access, they need access to that guest wireless, right? And so that's why that exists basically everywhere.
They tested that, correct? They tested our guest wifi and trying to get into our system then?
Uh, I don't know what they did to test the, the guest wifi, but uh, but we could certainly provide you with more information on that if, if you're interested in seeing it.
Are you interested in it?
No, I'm, I'm very confident that it's.
No one can get in through it.
This is a, a, a very uh, uh, standard procedure as far as setting up a, a guest network for uh, for that access, so.
We added a layer just uh, they should have to log into it. And then we slowed down the speed on it so that somebody's not parting close and just. So we did a couple of steps to do that and then it also logs those guests when they log in.
Totally different question, but policemen, are they, are police officers, are they, what, what internet access do you guys have? On your vehicles?
We have uh, cell.
A separate, totally separate from our.
Separate, but we, we use a VPN. Into here. And then go out on the internet for our.
Um, records management, LETG, all of that connection with our computers. But it's VPN and they installed that on mine, my computer. Yeah, you have watch guard VPNs. You use the same that we do to get into this network. But ours, like Zach said, ours are segmented. Police users get in with this certain group and we have access to those things. Um, our internet goes out differently than yours. You, you actually have faster internet. Ours is a state connection that's runs at a hundred meg.
Yours runs about five hundred meg.
When it's up.
Are there any other questions that we can answer?
It's like the city has a lot of work.
Classical requests um, for us if the council agrees to, to come up with some kind of a management document that we can review. All these activities and summarize completion dates and. Projected completion dates are and what.
I said, we'll probably just start by modifying that spreadsheet. Now, if you want a little bit more of a, a higher level summary too, we can summarize from there as well.
Kind of a nice dashboard with colors. No, but I mean, you know, it'd, it'd be kind of the same thing because you could see where things are going and if they're completing faster or slower or.
The thing about the policies though, I don't know. That's more of a longer term thing where, and, and I think the way that, that I align here is really. To, to jump into that, it's kind of, kind of hard to jump in because you don't know where to start. Because there's, you know, they're asking for all sorts of stuff. Where do you start? And so you start with, well, what are your biggest areas of concern is probably where to start. Because it's not just about compliance. You wanna improve the environment. You know, you, you want this to be legitimate. You don't wanna just be doing it to meet the requirements of the new. So you wanna work on the things that you feel are necessary to work on. And I think I also noted in here too, um, any low-hanging fruit too. I mean, there might be some that are just simple to do, you know, simple, you know. Simple stuff to get it out of the way, you know, right away and, and that'll improve your score too when you, when you run the uh, scan, yeah, so.
This is the first one we've ever done, right? So I, I'm glad that we're doing it and glad you guys organized it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. The next item on the agenda is the ambulance service agreement with North Memorial.
Uh, yes, I will take that. So the agreement before you is one that I've been working on with North Memorial. It is substantially similar to our previous agreements. There have been a few updates. I know one thing that the council kind of asked for when we were going through the process, uh, they liked what the other. I guess proposal from Mayo considering uh, concerning having a uh, the, the second crew in the station twelve hours a day. And so our previous agreement only had one crew there twenty-four hours a day, the one that. Uh, we have, I've worked through with Royal has crews, basically they're thirty-six hours a day, if that makes sense, one full crew and one twelve-hour crew. And other than that, uh, the only other real change, uh, there is a little bit of language in the lease. The lease section under section eight, uh, I do know that uh, Councilman Wolf did email me wondering if this section should be in there at all. Uh, and that's definitely something we can take a look at. This would be.
Where is it?
Section eight, so it's, it's on page three of seven of the actual agreement.
No, eight is license. Would that be under facilities five?
I took it to mean five.
All right, yeah, yeah, sorry. I don't know why I was looking at license. Um, license would be section eight. So yes, that'd be under facilities. Uh, there's a little bit of language change there um, that we worked through, but uh, I do understand if. The council would feel more comfortable either full, just fully eliminating that um, or crafting that language a little bit. But uh, to answer uh, Councilman Wolf's questions, yes, uh, North Memorial has really been looking at this with me. Uh, and kind of agreed to those minor changes that are in this document. As of this time, they've told us that they're still not interested in leasing our facility. They haven't real, been forthcoming of what they will lease at this point or what they'll build. I know they were talking to us a little bit and then kind of backed off of that. So I'm not sure what their plans are at this point. I would suspect that there's going to end up being some sort of short-term lease. Unless they're able to find somewhere to move into because they have until April thirtieth at this point of next year, until that runs out.
My issue is are they going to lease a place though? I mean, we're not gonna have a s- an ambulance sitting out in the parking lot with the guys in there waiting for a call, are we?
That's their prerogative.
Not if they're not getting any sleep.
I guess, yeah, that would be on them and if for some reason they are not able to fulfill their agreement with us of running an ambulance service due to that. Um, that to me feels like a, a breach of contract.
Guys, if we don't know where they're gonna be housed, we can't really just say yes to this. Yeah, yes, we can because there's a lot of ambulance services that do that exact same thing right now.
Through that statement, however. What I wonder about, have we thought about what we, do we need this space if no one's renting it? Uh, because our, our request was to, to start the negotiation of the contract. Assuming that we're gonna get a market rate and they came back and said there's not gonna be, they don't want it at all. So have we thought about, do we need, do we want that to happen? If, if we do, that's fine, but. If we have somebody that's willing to pay market rent, should that be considered versus not having rented at all?
Well, I think one of the things that. That section five can change, maybe not to address exactly what you're talking about, Bruce, is that. We agree to lease. A portion of that building at a mutually agreeable. Monthly rate or square foot rate, right? It's by the square foot. Is right now, we're just saying the city agrees to lease it. But there's no contingency on negotiating a rate for that, so. They, they, the ambulance service could come back and say, well, you agree to, to lease it to us and, and we'll agree to this dollar price. But there doesn't seem to be any room for negotiation.
I think it'd be very, I, I would really be opposed to having this in there. Because it gives them all the ability to do something and holds up the property for us. We can't do anything with the property if we are holding this available to them for five years or whatever term.
I see your point.
Have it out there, I think is. Is not in our best interest to do it.
So just strike it and then.
And I mean, I, I think at that point we could just strike it all together. And then if we decide to lease later, great. If we decide not to, great, but.
And it would be a separate lease agreement.
And, and it is kind of a separate lease agreement anyway. But by doing this calls out the ability that makes it more open. So yeah, I mean, we could do that.
Uh, hi Josh, or you know, Josh, September or whatever that was, but what? I, I never thought that we really had the conversation. What are we, now that we're faced with the possibility of nobody leasing it? Are we comfortable with that? And I don't know that we talked about that.
Well, I think. I guess I was under the impression that this faci- facility study that's gonna come back in October or something is probably gonna.
So, so that is something we've already talked to those consultants about, that there is possibility that this space will be open. Um, and they said, yeah, I mean, we'll definitely take that into account in, in terms of our recommendations for space. And that sort of thing of if, if we have any departments that could potentially move over there and utilize the space. And what that utilization may, may take on our part, if any, for having to rehab the space or that sort of thing.
Yeah, I guess I agree with you too, Bruce. We could, we could do that and then. Jeez, you know, why couldn't North just cooperate with you on that? After they got the five years, then they switch uh, gears on their cooperation and I don't really like that.
It, it's all a matter of coming down to money. So what they're paying per square foot, now they're happy paying. But we were seeking to increase that square footage rate and that's what they are objecting to. Excuse me, excuse me, Rick. So it's not as if they're not willing to lease it and it's coming out of the blue. It was just the, the point of how much it was going to cost. And that conversation then created the decision that they may not lease it because of the money involved.
Well, I thought North Memorial Hospital didn't want us to have access to their financial papers to avoid this.
So the idea being, um, I had worked into the agreement that if they were going to be leasing the facility from us to anything less than market rate. We would wanna see financial documents to show this is why we are indirectly subsidizing the service. Due to these financial costs that they are bearing. And so when they said, well, if we don't wanna lease the facility, we shouldn't have to share financial costs. And I said, that's fair. Like we, we don't need to see finances at that point if we are not gonna be indirectly subsidizing the service.
So can we strike number five from this?
I, I mean, if that's the wish council goes, I can go back to them and I have a feeling that they're going to be just fine with striking number five. At that, so if that's the way we wanna go, I think that would be just fine.
I would agree to that.
Do we need that as a motion?
So I guess I would say if that's the only change you wanna see here, maybe you could make the motion contingent on that. Or, or I guess you, you could make, you could approve this document contingent on the striking of five and if for some reason that doesn't work, then. Then that uh, approval kind of goes away and it would come back to you again later. Um, but I guess that's up to you guys on whether you wanna try to get this approved tonight or we can look at it again in the future. At the next meeting or in se- sometime in September, once we've got that.
I think I'd like to see it all tightened up.
Yep, that's fine.
I don't know about everybody else.
Is, is there general acceptance of striking five then? Just so I know I've got, working with the whole council here.
Yeah, right. I agree. Um, Bruce, you were gonna say.
Well, I prefer seeing a red line copy of the changes. You said substantially the same, but there.
I'll see, at the next one, I'll bring both a clean copy and a red line copy back.
The ALS staffing was important consideration to start this and when the city got away from doing it themselves. So another issue I guess, or topic I would bring up is this sharing of information. Are we gonna be able to get information about ALS? How many times is it not ALS staff? Because it, that seemed to be a confusing thing as we got, went through with both Mayo and North. North described it, oh yeah, we do the same thing as that. And most of the time we have it, but it seems like we're talking in generalities. The goal of the city was way back when to transition to ALS service. I understand we don't have an ALS license.
Part-time.
Basic, it is basic, but. The goal was to move more towards permanent ALS and that, that's a tall order, I'm sure, but. It'd be nice to be able to track or can they track? And I'm sure they can, because it's based on their. When you resource records, how often is it not? Staff, how often do we not have ALS service? Is, is something to monitor and maybe they have a hundred percent. I think they make it, made it sound like it doesn't happen hardly at all.
Yeah, from my conversations with them, it sounds like I would probably say ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. That they, they try to staff all the time, but if someone calls out sick and they can't get another paramedic on, you may have a BLS truck or if it's a second truck that goes out. You may have a BLS truck go out because they don't have enough paramedics that are available at that time. Because you really only need, you need, just need one paramedic on that truck to make it in ALS. And so if for some reason two, two EMTs go out. It becomes a BLS run. Uh, and it sounds like it happens rarely, but.
Well, it'd be nice to be able, I don't know if they can, but I would think they can. How many, how many twenty-four hours do we not have ALS coverage? And is it because of multiple calls? Or is it because we have human resource issues or can't staff?
Yep. Yeah, I can, I can see if we can get that kind of information shared too, because I, they should have that information. Thinking back to my previous position where we ran an ambulance service, like they should be keeping track of those runs.
Do you wanna add that to section three?
That would be my, my consideration is, that's where information goes.
So yeah, yeah, similar to striking five, if, if that's something generally of the council, I can see if I can get that information added as well.
I'm not suggesting we move up our, I don't even know if we can move up our license to ALS license, nor would we want to. Because this provides a lot of flexibility not having it.
Yes, say, say the nice thing about a part-time B, part-time ALS is it allows you for some reason, human. Like human resource issue or whatnot and you're, or you're running a third truck. Because I mean, sometimes you get third and fourth trucks that run and you just don't have enough paramedics to be able to make that. It allows you still to make that run without compromising your license with the state.
The other consideration when we, when we had the hear, hear, hearing and the discussion, I suggested a shorter term one because it's something. Issues that are running for legislature studying ambulance service and their audit that they came up with this year. And so I suggested a shorter term than five years, so that would be my brother or sister tried to do something shorter than five years. Originally, this was drawn for five years because there's a lot of capital expense, is they bought our equipment. And part of that justification was to give them time to help absorb the cost.
So do we have the capability of reviewing that uh, time period? So if it's set right now at five years, I made the motion and I'm agreeing exactly what you said because now they're getting kind of shaky.
So I, I don't agree to make the contract any less than that. Well, I think they've had a very good track record with us, you know, first and foremost. And, um, you know, to, to retain that connection and continuity is very important. Secondly, a- and I know that this isn't anything that the city maybe should really care about, but I care about is the, the employees. And how would you like to feel that every two years, your job is on the line? You know, and so I'm, I'm not, I, I don't like that to happen. So, um, but we have an out. We'd have a termination clause so that if something isn't going right within that five years. I think the lead time though is, is at least a year, three hundred sixty-five days, which, which would be needed to get a new service in place. Because we even gave that, you know, um, to, we had that discussion with Mayo Clinic Health System of giving that full year to be up and running.
And I don't mean to suggest it to cause any more concern of any employees. And I'm not looking at that a can, employees should have any concern, whether it's a three or five year. Because we're not automatically just going to turn it over. We haven't historically turned it over at all. Consideration. I, I understand.
So just to answer your question, uh, it is three hundred and sixty-five days if we would like to get out for any reason. It's ninety days if for some reason there's a breach of contract.
Okay, if you would.
So I guess my question is, there was a little bit of discussion there, potentially changing the term. I guess where do we land on that? I know I, I kind of heard two for changing the term and one against changing.
Well, I'd be, I'd leave it at five also. You know, and I'm with me, I, I don't, I totally agree with Maggie on that and we agreed on it before it was even made. But, um, once they started getting shaky about finances, it put a bad taste in my mouth. It kind of went all out and said, yeah, you're, it's yours. You, you were great. And then now all of a sudden they're, oh, wait, oh, wait, we don't want you to see our paperwork. That's scary. So I don't.
I, I guess my recommendation in this case would be to stick with the five-year term just for more of a continuity. It feels a little more stable at that point than having to review it every couple of years.
No, I'm fine with the five year. I mean, we do have that provision in here where we have, we can give notice if need be. So.
Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is the community center mortgage discussion.
Yes, and so we did, we have discussed this at least one other time. Along the lines of the community center wanted to do a million dollars in improvements. They went to, uh, First National or First Bank and Trust, received a loan. They told me that it was happening. I asked them, was there anything they need from the city? They said, no, they were fine.
And I did that too.
That it wasn't until it got to the county level that the county kicked it back, saying you guys are not the owners of the land. You're going to need the city to sign off. We talked about it briefly and the bank again tried to record it and the second time they tried, the county accepted the recording. So along those lines, at that point, uh, Eric Krogman, president of the bank, asked me if there was anything that the city was willing to just generally say that we approve of this. I, I talked to Scott quickly about it and he recommended at that point not approving or kind of leaving it alone because without signing it, we aren't currently liable if for some reason something happened. I did speak with Eric after that. He mentioned that, well, if something does happen, that they are going to seek to foreclose on the property. And so our attorneys, uh, kind of ran a title check over there and they didn't find anything. Like it wasn't even, the mortgage wasn't even against the property. He said that was real weird. Just a couple of weeks ago, they looked again and actually did find that it came through. Though at the same time, it is their opinion that, uh, we are not liable for anything because our name is still not on the document at all. That being said, I do, I think we should kind of button this up somehow. Because like I said, I know the bank at this point is still looking for a yes, no, coming from us. And I wonder if instead of just lea- leaving this hanging out there, we should kind of give them a decision of yes, we, we approve of this, um, and kind of going through it. Or we do not approve because they did not come and ask us first. I know if you read through my memo, I did recommend, you know, as much as I want to help out the community center and I think they are an asset. And in fact, um, they could become more of one if, uh, that building was made to be able to handle more. I think kind of whole process that this has gone through, I, I have to recommend, I guess, not denial, but not supporting the mortgage. Only in that, one, I don't know if the city can sign off on a mortgage just through a bank that isn't a bid process, especially for this amount. Two, it was never really brought before us and asked, it's kind of backing us into a corner and then saying, hey, will you approve of this second hand? If that makes sense. So assuming that we don't support it, as long as they're able to continue paying the mortgage and all that, like there, there's really no problem. I think the big problem would then come if for some reason, uh, they had financial hardships. And the bank went, went searching for a way to collect on its remaining, um, loan. So.
So I have a question. What is the advantage to the city for us owning the property underneath the community center?
So I believe if, and s- some people were here longer. I don't know if anyone was here when it actually, when the whole transaction went down. I believe we owned it because we needed to, uh, to take advantage of the Mighty Ducks grant when it was first built. And so it had to be applied for, through a municipality or local government body. And so that's how we kind of got underneath it so that that way that grant could be applied.
And that could happen again.
Yeah. And so for some reason they decided to go after another one in the future, that would make them eligible to be able to do so.
Well, my recommendations on that is going to be, um, um, look, they, they, they got the loan. This doesn't need to be here even. This is an afterthought, um, to secure somebody else's, but we don't have to do this. They have other projects coming up in the future. I, I recommend to you guys that we sell that property to them.
But for the reasons that Josh just mentioned, if they try to go after other, like grant type money that needs.
If any other committee or anything like that went and borrowed a million dollars without informing us, um, they would be facing the same thing that we've been thinking about doing with the hockey rink. If we sell that to them, they can go and make whatever improvements they want. They can put an addition on if they want. I mean, they don't have to go through us.
Oh, and Rick, I had thought, you know, and that's the, why I brought up the question about, you know, what's the advantage to us owning the property? Because if we could sell it to them, you know, for a nominal fee, then, then we wash our hands of it. Um, so.
Because I don't even know what's there. What's there could just be what's underneath the building. And if we don't own any more land than that, you know, even if there would be an extension of the Mighty Ducks, it wouldn't do any good if we don't own the rest of the land.
But why couldn't they just, yeah, I mean, if they really needed the city to own that land, they could resell it back to us if they were going to go for this Mighty Ducks money. Because they'd need to, so.
But at least we'd have some authority. I mean, um, right now, uh, did anybody else know that this piece of paper was even coming today? Because I didn't. I'd never get informed on anything.
What, what piece of paper are you referring?
This one right here, the, 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 um, would be the, uh, million dollar they want to, um, it's just, it's the piece of paper in your package.
Yeah, we knew about this.
We knew about it and everything, but I didn't hear it was coming back up again. I mean, I thought this issue was ironed out. They didn't want us involved, so we didn't get involved.
Yeah, and it was one of those things where, um, it was just last week that, uh, Scott Riggs gave me a call. Because there's suddenly the title work had come up and he was, um, that suddenly this mortgage was sitting out there. And I'd gotten an email from Eric Krogman again here about a week ago saying, hey, um, I know we discussed it before, is there any way the city can give us a yes, no, or otherwise on this? And that's where, um, if you read through here, I said, you know, we, we probably shouldn't button this up one way or the other. So it's not just hanging out and we have an organization who is, put a million bucks on the line, just wondering where the city's at.
Yeah, I think I might have mentioned this before, but there, there may be requirements under the Mighty Ducks grant that are long-term. And I, I don't have access to those documents anymore, but, um, it is challenging because we're dealing with something that happened a long time ago. And that the, the city entity that was involved was really the EDA that was involved and not directly the city. The city had to be involved or to get the grant and, but the EDA actually borrowed money originally and facilitated a lot of this work between the local banks to get it built with. Um, and the city actually was a recipient to the Mighty Ducks grant and it had to be the city. So the group of people, and there's a big group of people that were involved in it. Really, it all had to work together and it did, but financially they couldn't do it either. So it was a Mighty Ducks grant plus financially, they couldn't qualify for financing because it was a brand new entity. They created a, this grouping, uh, which became the, later on, the New Great Community Center LLC or whatever it was. So there was a lot of reasons why the city was involved back then. Right now, I, I, I don't necessarily feel, I don't know that there's a requirement we need to be involved. Part of the requir- part of the interest also back then was that we would be able to be involved to ma- make sure it was kept in the, uh, city's best interest. To then turn around and make it a private hockey arena. And so that was part of it as well, why? So we may still have that interest or want to be involved to make sure it's maintained for the public interest. So that would be a reason to do it. The Mighty Ducks requirements might say you have to keep it available for thirty years for children or something. I know there were strings to it. I just don't remember what the strings were and I didn't know, I don't know how long they went.
Yeah, and I can definitely look into.
The original financing has been paid, so those requirements have gone away. But I, I'm not opposed if, if all those details get worked out that we, if, if the group is financially viable to turn over the land initially, if it's maintained for the public's interest.
Yeah, that's the big.
That would have to be worked out. But here we're talking about that idea of something had to be worked out over a longer period of time to figure all that out. It's not going to ha- help, um, Eric's issue right now. But, um, I would not be opposed to it. The school, I think, gave or sold the gymnastics group the land underneath that building. So the gymnastics groups owns the land and the building. That's different, but they didn't get a grant, they didn't have the same issues. We have a historical society with our log home and our buildings. But it's the cities now, we, you know, a lot of these things, the library was built with a lot of donated money. But it's all the cities, they don't own any of it. Same type of thing. This is just kind of a unique.
Yeah, it is. So maybe our initial response is, none, we can't, you know, we're not going to sign anything, we're not going to send an email, we're not going to have, you know, anything documented that we support this particular loan, because I think that's a potential for some risk. And then maybe let Eric know that we have another option that, but that's going to take a long time to.
It's going to take some time to flesh out? Okay, yeah, I mean, I go back to him with that, that we're not ready to say one way or the other with support, but we're looking into our options.
A verbal, unless we pass a resolution, isn't do anything for real estate law.
No, and I mean, and yeah, it was Scott's opinion that meanwhile, it wouldn't lock us into liabilities. Depending on your judge, it potentially. It, it could, it could give certain judges the ability to say, okay, yeah, you guys actually did show support for this, which means you are liable.
There's still a question, has always been a question in my mind, what part of that building is the city owned? What part to the community center?
According to taxes, it is the whole lot. That is the city of New Prague.
The building?
The building and the parking lot, the outer area of it, all of that is city of New Prague.
The building?
It's just the. And the parking lot.
I think, I think on their financial records, they show that they own the building.
They own the building.
The building, but the, the land. Is, is the entire lot is the city.
So it's just the land that the building.
I understand that, but.
Lot and the parking lot, okay, but.
Still a question in my mind, how much of the building is owned by them and how much by the city? We, the city gave, the, the city gave the grant to build the building.
On the briefing that Mike gave me with it, um, um, supposedly we helped them out with their addition too. So I don't know exactly who owns what.
I think we need to look into it a little bit more.
Yeah, looking to see who holds the deed.
But this right here that's on the agenda, I agree with not, not, they already got the loan. We can go ahead and took responsibility for any of that.
I, I guess, yeah, what, what's general wish of the council? Um, I got a couple.
I don't think we're able to do anything with the mortgage. Unless, unless we, unless they make an, or unless we make an application and become a party to the transaction.
And I think that would be where if the city council decides to say, yes, we kind of approve or support this mortgage. Scott and I would kind of dig into it and figure out what, what do we have to do that's, that more legal than a, a mortgage from a one private entity or semi-private entity to another.
I don't know that I would want to go down that route, saying that we approve this loan. Because it, we have nothing to do with it. It's a loan to a di- a different legal entity. So I don't, I don't want us to be tied to it or have our name on it in any way, in the event that there is an issue with repayment.
And it's possible we not support the loan and then continue to look at our options with the land going forward.
That's. What I was, I guess, under the understanding, not a, not support the loan and. So I'll make the motion that Stafford's man not supporting the twenty twenty-two community center mortgage application. Is that enough?
I don't feel that we have an application.
No, we don't have an application.
Or I guess the, or it'd be the community center was mortgage application. Like, do, do we, do we support the original application to the bank for the mortgage?
Well, yeah, it kills me to say it, but, but I think there is a mistake made by a financial institution trying to. It, it's over record, the city of New Great owns that, uh, the land. So it's not a.
And, and that's where I'm just trying to clear up this email from the fact that, I mean, we do use them and work with them a lot. And I didn't really want to leave this hanging out there. But basically, do we or do we not support this mortgage that they made?
The wording that you choose to use is, is strange to me to support it. I mean. The community center, I'm glad they got the loan. I'm glad they're doing all the work. I totally, I'm totally okay with that. A totally different issue, which is a real estate legal issue.
And, and I guess I'm saying support because I don't feel like, well, we don't have the ability to approve it per se, because nothing came before us to approve. And that's, that's why, I mean, if you've got a different word you can think of, I, I was trying to think of what word would work for what we are trying to convey through here.
From a legal standpoint, they're wanting us to basically sign the mortgage, which would allow them to totally foreclose and take the, the real estate property plus. And, and that's, I've done that. That's what I used to do. Real estate mortgages, I'm familiar with the circumstances, but.
Maybe Scott can suggest some language.
If, if they want to go that route, then I think we have to know the full details of what we're giving up as far as the financial capacity to repay it, is we have to look at the public's interest. Is this going to get paid back? If bank forecloses and sells it for a Walmart or whatever it is, are we okay with it not being a hockey rink in the future?
So, so the exact wording that Eric sent me was, any luck getting minutes or formal approval on the city council to file a mortgage on the New Great Community Center, we received the filed mortgage back from Scott County, so we're covered from that perspective. However, I'd like something in my file noting the city's approval of the community center to file the mortgage.
I don't like that at all. No, I don't like that wording at all. He's looking for something to go to court with if it ever.
No ties to the mortgage.
Private group.
Private transaction.
That just happens to have a building on a chunk of our land. Yeah, I'm okay with that. I love it.
Man, I'm totally behind a, a community center and hockey players and all that stuff. I'm just not, this banker. You made the loan without it, so go ahead. You, your motion was to, um, um, go with the staff's recommendation for not supporting the, um, twenty twenty-two community center and mortgage application. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion is second. Any more discussion?
I might use different words.
What if, and I'm not changing the motion, but what happens if we said we support the private organization?
No.
Using our land. Using our land?
No, that, that still has
Too much.
Has some wiggle room to get right back to the city again.
All right, then I'll.
Yeah, I don't think you could say decline because it's not our application.
Right.
How, how do you say decline without saying decline?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure there's words out there. Just look up.
So I know there's a motion and a second. A little bit more discussion is you get the gist of, of what we want to do. So maybe Scott Riggs could draft a simple response back that doesn't use the word support, but has enough
Yep.
meaning that Eric will understand.
Yep, I'm assuming it passes. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Now, if this snowballs into a bigger issue, we may need to foreclose to clear it. That's something I might. As I said, I'm supportive of looking at we, that we can work it out long term if there's a way to do it.
I, I have a feeling if it came up that they attempted to foreclose on the property, that it's going to come to us at some point as the landowners and whether that's a city's ability to take it over somehow or whatnot, but
Well.
I have a feeling it wouldn't just happen without us.
And I would think that that would be attract, wouldn't it? Like attract foreclosure? You'd be close, foreclosing on a piece of a property?
I mean, it sounds, it sounds like Eric, they would try to come after the whole thing.
Yeah, well, the only way I understand that they have a lien on anything is anything that the mortgage is recovered, which isn't affixed to the real estate. To me, it's a goodwill mortgage more than anything else. I don't understand. Um, I'm not sure what happened or what the circumstances are, but the title obviously was very obvious to me, the city's name, so. And I'm sure they did title works. I don't understand what happened. So it's really kind of odd.
Yeah.
You can certainly mortgage fixtures
Mm hmm.
in the hockey rink itself and the physical things inside of it and the equipment.
Correct.
But the only person that can sign a mortgage is the owner of the land. So in, in the, in the effort or for goodwill for the community, I, I support working something out if we can with the land. Where my mind is going with that though is if we do something long-term with that, that we try to put in covenants or something that it's maintained to sort of read for the public's interest and it's not going to turn into a gresham.
Mm hmm.
Nothing wrong with this.
No, we already know in the future they, they want another sheet of ice. And this, um, by taking the council out of the picture, gives them the ability to search out a little bit more. I, I thought about this all day today and, um, I don't know, sell them the land for a good cheap price and we support you. We're a hundred, behind you a hundred percent and let's start working on the finances for the second sheet of ice, but it gives you guys the flexibility with this million dollars. Get that place all tuned up, you know, so I don't.
I don't remember. Does anybody remember? Do, did the city buy the land? I don't remember that part. Because I don't think the city owned the land.
I thought it was E D A, wasn't it?
Yeah, but.
Opportunities maybe?
Yeah.
Right, oh, sure. Somebody else owned it before.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I don't know if there's money that the city extended, the purchase transaction or we came across it. Low fee.
Okay. Next item up is the Habitat for Humanity permit fees reduction.
Just real quick on this one, Habitat for Humanity is building their eighth home in New Prague. This one is located at five oh five Second Avenue Northwest. Uh, previous seven homes, the council's been requested to and has approved a fifty percent reduction in building permit, plan review, park dedication, as well as the water and sewer connection. So that is what they're requesting. This particular home, it would be a five thousand nine hundred and twenty one dollar and thirty four cent savings to them uh, for this home, so.
And is that the savings to the, um, uh, housing habitat or is that savings to the home buyer?
This is savings to Habitat for Humanity as the applicant of that home. Obviously, if you participate in Habitat for Humanity, you have sweat equity hours into that and a reduced price. Obviously, you do have a mortgage in the end. So, yeah, it, it goes to the homeowner in these cases. I'm very confident with that. Yeah, eventually, yes. Whether it be you know, how long they stay in the home, that might go to a different order at some point in the future, but there's a lot of strings attached to these habitat homes. So, yes, there's a benefit to it.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit fee reduction to Habitat for Humanity for five oh five Second Avenue Northwest.
I'll second.
Maggie made a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is outside music uh, at thirteen nineteen Woodfire Tavern for Do Zinki Weekend.
Honorable mayor and council, uh, I passed out the memo earlier and, uh, Mona Schulte had, uh, come into the office and just requested that, uh, they have a patio extension for Do Zinki Weekend. Um, it was in place last year when they purchased it in August and opened up. And the photo that is with your, uh, memo is, uh, actually an air photo that just happened to catch the setup that was up last year. Um, where it is fenced in in the back. That's what they are looking to do also. Um, same type of setup. They would have security um, at the entry point on the north side of the fence along the alley and would, uh, control access in and out there. Uh, the other entrance would be their main entrance to the uh, restaurant tavern. Um, some of the conditions that I listed there, uh, I did limit the, uh, use of the patio. She requested Friday and Saturday night, or Friday and Saturday into the night on Saturday. Um, and, uh, along with that, they wanted to have live music. Um, generally, it is limited, outdoor music is limited to ten P M. Um, according to zoning, quiet time after ten P M. Um, they requested to go as late as possible. The, uh, night before that, Friday night, uh, the chamber will, has requested to play until twelve o'clock. Um, so they normally do that for the quasi-city celebration Do Zinki. Um, but I did want to just bring it up to you. In the, uh, actual conditions, I, uh, said the outdoor music may play, may be played until ten P M, according to our zoning. Um, that in mind, I did talk to her today. Um, I asked her how long they wanted the music to go. She said, well, let's just be safe and say twelve thirty. And I said, Mona, that's not going to happen. I can't recommend that to the council that you play that late. Um, I said, but I will open it up to the council that if they want to entertain a different time, they can do that, but our standard time would be ten o'clock. And she just asked that I give her a call tomorrow and let her know what was decided so that they can make contact with the band to have them start early enough to get their four hours in if it's going to be ten o'clock. Um, I think that's workable. Um, I just, I know the back entry. Um, they do have a pray, a, a dance permit that they purchase each year. Um, but generally those are for indoor events where if we do get a noise complaint, we're able to go there and say, hey, make sure you keep the door closed so the sound is not going out. We've dealt with that at a different, couple of different venues. Um, but when it, when the band is outside, it's difficult to control that noise unless we go up there and say, hey, you guys need to shut it down. So, uh, with that, I just would look for the council's recommendation um, to approve the request with the conditions above. Um, and if you have any other options for the, uh, timeline on the music being played outside, uh, to designate that in the motion.
So just for clarification, um, the Chamber of Commerce is able to play music to twelve P M each Friday and Saturday nights?
They just play on Friday night.
Just Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, they had one, one year, probably in two thousand nineteen-ish that they did, uh, they tried a Saturday night and they didn't want to do that anymore.
Okay.
It's true. Oh, and there's, they used to get a a variance to play until eleven o'clock and I would say probably the last five years to, up to two thousand nineteen, they had requested to do it at twelve o'clock, to play till twelve o'clock, and that's what they've been doing the last few years then.
So if you, you have one band playing on one end of town till twelve, you're going to shut down the other end at ten? Well, these are two different nights.
They're two different nights. Yeah, it's not even on the other end of town though. It's, yeah. It's right down the alley.
Couple of blocks away.
But it is, it's the following night that the tavern would have it. So the chamber plays on Friday night. They are requesting their live music for Saturday night.
The reason, the reason I made that comment is twelve sounds pretty right to me. I don't why would we change it for them and not for Do Zinki?
Um, again, I think there's a difference here with a private business wanting to make noise outside. Um, when you have a city celebration and there, it's on the public street, it is a street dance part of Do Zinki, the city celebration. Um, that's different to me than, again, a private bar just wanting to have an extended patio and have a celebration out there with live music. I don't know that they need to go that late, but that's just my thought.
I would agree. It's nonprofit versus a profit institution and different motivations and things. But we're trying to recall my mic. What, what, under what authority or ordinance do we grant this? This is some variance of a zoning or what, what is this?
Um, it is, well.
Premises extension.
Yeah, premises extension.
For liquor license?
For a liquor license.
Oh, it's under the liquor license?
Yeah, that they can, they're able to provide liquor, another area, extended area for consumption of alcohol.
And music is in there or sound or whatever?
Pardon?
And the music falls under the liquor?
Um, the music is just an additional part and that's, that's kind of why ten o'clock is designated in our zoning, uh, because even for somebody applying for a block party, that they want to shut down the street and have a block party in their neighborhood, those forms and permits state ten o'clock, that the music must stop at ten o'clock. Um, due to just quiet time between seven P M and seven A M.
And there is rental property, isn't there? Residential rental property?
Yep.
Yeah, right in that area.
Yeah, in fact, they're going to be totally cut off. They can't even get upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that I would be in favor of extending it past ten o'clock just because of the residential aspect.
Yeah, I'm actually good enough with the way you wrote it all.
So I would take a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
The motion is there a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So the next item I have on the agenda is the administrator evaluation. So last council meeting, we held a closed meeting uh, to discuss, um, Josh's, um, um.
Year anniversary.
One year anniversary in evaluation, um, as was provided in the contract. And, um, all in all, he got a good evaluation with some critiques and he wrote them down and and is going to work on them. And, um, so with that, um, I know Don wanted to, um, make a motion that night, but we couldn't, um, um, till we discussed it publicly, um, to increase his step. Um, so Josh recommended that he would take a three thousand dollar reduction. Am I reading it right? Okay, no. Um, uh, he, right now he's at step two, uh, making a hundred and thirty thousand eighty three dollars and twenty cents and he would move up to step three. Um, uh, if there was a what's the satisfactory evaluation, um, to one thirty three, six sixty, eighty. So does anybody have any counts, or any, uh, questions? Otherwise I'd take a motion to approve that step and, um, approve that we reviewed his evaluation. So there's been a motion by Sean. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconded the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approved Brandon Pike and Jason Betson for the um, um, planning and zoning commission.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion by Rick, seconded by Sean to approve those two individuals. Um, they seem very qualified. So with that, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I.
I need to recuse myself because I was not part of the interview process.
Oh, okay, very good. Um, and she abstained or whatever, uh.
I wasn't either, but, uh, I'm going to approve it just based off the recommendation of the
Okay.
council members.
Okay, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with um, Maggie stepping, stepping aside. Anything else? Um, Matt? Chief?
No, other than, I was just going to ask Matt already, because, um, those are the whole post.
Yeah. I wasn't going to bring it up publicly, but, you know.
No, the only other thing I have, uh, Thursday, we have a couple of interviews.
For, uh, two individuals that had applied, we've, we've been leaving our, uh, our process open on the, our, our website. Um, so we have two more additional applicants and we'll be looking at interviewing them on Thursday for in-person interviews.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd be looking at, uh, at least trying to put one on and get them through field training as I entertain my departure date.
Yeah, you know, um, did you guys decide on that, on our future goals? I had seen that somewhere in there, there was a one additional police officer.
Don't, not yet. We haven't addressed that.
Yep, that's something we haven't talked about. I figure we kind of talk about it coming into the budget cycle.
Yep.
Where we're at with that.
Um, Ken?
Uh, real quickly, just, uh, draw your attention to the Scott County housing study that was completed and I wanted to let you know that oh, we did share that with all the local developers and builders so that they could take a look and I don't think anybody's surprised to see that we still have demand for housing. There's immediate demand for rental. Obviously, we had Marv Deutsch with his apartment building. Um, so hoping that'll spur that development on. And then generally speaking, we have one of the most affordable housing supplies in the county. Um, particularly kind of around our central business district area with the single family home, so, um, good report. We shared a lot with people that are looking to, to build in New Prague and even with um, businesses, they find it very interesting to read through that, showing our growth and demand. And as we get into our conference of plan, uh, update here this fall and then through the next year or so, um, this will obviously be incorporated into that as well. So very important document. Um, and Scott County is getting close to finishing up their commercial and industrial study through Maxfield as well. Um, that shows demand for commercial industrial, um, current inventory and their, uh, projections out into the future as well. So when that comes forward, we'll give that to the council as well. So.
Okay.
Uh, real quickly on the, uh, edibles or T H C update. So obviously the more term went into effect on, or August first at our meeting. Um, we did have a bunch of discussion internally at our staff meeting. Um, we're hoping to have a meeting with Scott Riggs to kind of plan out our next steps. He uh, was under the weather for the past week. We do have a conference call with him on Wednesday morning this week to basically game plan where we're going forward. We obviously heard the council had talked about, um, having a license and getting something in place potentially as a rider to the tobacco ordinance. Uh, the league is recommending to actually keep this separate from the tobacco in case changes happen down the road, but, uh, we'll confirm that with, uh, Scott Riggs and what he's thinking on that, but, um, I think that the biggest concern is we may have other businesses that aren't tobacco shops that may want to sell products that may bake the product in or in a brewed in, let's say. products that may bake the product in or in a brewed in, let's say. Um, so we'll explore those options and we'll give you a game plan hopefully at the next meeting on how we can move forward.
And and you did go around.
Yes.
Yeah.
And.
Two selling it.
Two selling it.
Tobacco shops.
Yep.
Two tobacco.
Correct.
Were the only ones identified.
Yeah, because I did witness that the next morning right away. Was this when I was in the bakery, they came in.
Oh, yeah, some.
So.
Um.
Or Katie came in.
Two night person people uh did uh that night. They went to several places and then I had Katie.
Yep. Thanks for jumping.
Yep, you were on it right away. I noticed it too.
Sounds.
Thank you.
That's our update. We'll we'll have a bright plan for some type of license to come in front of you um after we talk to Scott. But want to get his opinion before we move forward um any until that point, basically.
Oh, well, did you anybody go to the scale meeting? Because I know that was a topic and I.
Yes, I was. Yeah, I was there. They they had they asked kind of the administrators kind of at this point, what have your councils talked about? And so I I gave a brief update and it kind of sounds like most people are all in the same. Uh, I know at this point, I believe Savage, uh, Elko, New Market and uh Shakopee have not yet put moratoriums into place. Elko, New Market, it sounds like they're not quite sure where they want to go. Um, at this point, uh Savage hasn't done it only because they've had councilman a lot of a lot of council members out on vacation in August. And so they're bringing it forward to talk in September. And it sounds like in Shakopee, uh, they're going to be discussing it this week at their council meeting. So.
I saw in the paper that Alexandria turned down a moratorium. It was in the Star Tribune.
Mm hmm.
Um, just one thing that I was thinking of, I I and I don't know how it ends up and I however you guys want to list it, but I think it should be like a brick and mortar too, building not like a pop-up on Do Zinki Main Street or a farmer's market or something, you know, where all of a sudden they're selling these, you know? But.
Gosh.
Yeah, well, no, I just think it should be a brick and mortar.
Twelve beers for ten dollars, some gummies for ten dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I totally agree with that.
Send in from somebody opening up the drink.
We got the guy that does the fireworks and then.
True.
He had to be brick and mortar.
Just just be brick and mortar.
And yeah.
So so they can't.
And that is something we've already.
Not a pop-up, not a peddler.
Yeah, yeah, not a farmer's market where they just throw a tent up and are selling that thing.
Like Ken said, we've had discussions like I don't we don't know if we want necessarily limit tobacco because we have there's other ways of consuming it and we don't want to necessarily cut those businesses out as well.
Right.
If if for some reason you bake or brew or however you get this into your product.
It totally makes sense. That's why there should be a separate licensing which would require a bulk of rules and regulations.
And that's kind of what we're.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, Maggie.
I don't have anything.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I was just going to remind you that we do have our budget first budget meeting on the twenty ninth, five thirty. Um, and I should have all the budget stuff out to you by this Friday. So you guys have a week and a half to look at it before the meeting.
I was just trying to stand up for Matt.
That's.
You're welcome. Okay, Maggie.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Sean.
I do not.
I don't.
Uh, just follow Ken on your coming to Maxwell State. I don't think they provide or at least I didn't see. But what you're talking about the commercial, is there a way we can get average rental rate information out there? I know that.
For commercial industrial?
Or residential? I mean, when you talk about mar site or other residential apartment buildings.
That in the housing study for the residential. I'd have to look back at the commercial industrial one. I know they they have some yeah from historic. I don't know that they project anything, but yeah, I believe that's in there as well.
So if I look in the study itself, it will show the residential? Okay, would it be by city? Or is it just?
So I think there's tables in there that do show.
Okay.
If not, I'm sure I can get that from them. I forget it because we get to see a lot of the background from them. So I can remember.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering. I'm sure there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that's in there, but um certainly for developers or other people, investors in New Prague, they're interested in knowing what the average rental rates and I'm sure you can buy that information. And I'm just curious if there's anything uh with our rental ordinance committee status.
Yeah, I think it was in the last update Josh put out. Uh, we're just looking at getting a meeting set up with that committee after Labor Day. We have just a lot of people's commitments and.
Did we fill out the committee or?
We did fill out the committee. Yep, yep. So we have two tenants, two landlords, two at large, and then um council member Stiler and then just supported by staff.
Okay, thank you.
And city attorney.
And I caught that on the computer too. Where to where was it? It was during his his update.
His weekly update.
I think it was two month updates.
Maybe.
Oh, I think it was last.
Last week.
Yeah, I must have missed it.
So you're done?
I am.
I've only got one question. Um, Matt, um, you're digging pretty deep in the middle there. Are most of the stuff that we were doing on Columbus, is that completed?
Utility work?
Yes.
All utility work.
And same with sewage?
Yes, water, sewer, storm. Yeah, when they say utility, it's basically anything under the ground.
So um um the contractors responsible for everything else. So if there's an issue, it's him.
Uh huh. What was that?
The contractor is responsible for finishing the rest of the work. It's nothing else is on your plate.
Well, we oversee everything and we inspect everything, but no, the all utility work is done. And now they're building the street up, the subgrade to prepare for blacktop and curbing gutter and sidewalk. But no, there we're not done. Like the city still has is onsite daily.
Well, of course, yeah, I understand that. But I I was just wondering, um, if there's not a completion pretty darn soon, um, we're really going to run into some issues.
You know, substantial completion has to be done by the twenty six.
And I believe while it's tight, they are still on that schedule.
Yeah, it's there's no lie. It's very tight, but I they still believe they will finish on time.
Because they were going great guns today.
I think once that once that asphalt starts going down, it's going to go quickly.
Well, it usually does, you know, but I just.
My concern right now is the rain that they're talking towards the end of the week because that's when they're planning on doing between seven.
The curbing.
Wall Street.
Yeah.
And that's kind of where I was going with it, you know, if if you're on if we get a good rain, um, you're that doesn't just shut you down for the day you're getting the rain. You got to count the day or so you got to pump at everything out. So.
So I think Julie Brinkman sends out a weekly update on the progress. So it should be in your emails.
Did you get that from?
Came out today.
Yeah.
Yeah. She was I read that and.
I did. And I just I don't know.
No, I know. I hear you. That's if all everything goes good.
Everything's got to go perfect, you know?
So, all right. With that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second is by Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.
He said the cruise.
Yeah, he it was a real.